Twenty-second, 2020. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
I think that was.
Here.
Okay. Uer? Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Yeah.
Okay, was Malley here or?
Yes.
Malley's here. Is Meitzler here or no?
No.
No.
Eleven out of fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay. We have the necessary quorum. Okay, next up would be a reminder to speak directly into the microphone for the recording tonight for BATV. Moving right along, we'll go to item number three, which is items to be removed at or changed. Nothing tonight. Roll right on through. Matters from the public. I don't see anybody here from the public. Nobody called in from the public, so we're good. Then we'll move right on to Resolution 20-111-R, accepting ten-foot sidewalk easement from the Covenant Church for the purpose of construction of a five-foot sidewalk along the east side of church property. Okay, this is up by the high school, the corner of Main and Millview, and it's an easement from the church to build a sidewalk out there. And I think, according to the last email we got about this, that we're going to wait until next year to do it.
Yes.
Or we'd like to.
Yes. Prior to the school district announcing that they were going to reinstitute holding in-person classes, we had planned to do this, but now we do not want to be disruptive of their calling students back in for in-person classes. And also, it would increase the expense of the project if the contractor had to close roads and use flaggers and that type of thing. One of the advantages was that school was out of session, or at least not, you know, attending at that building.
Okay. As I was going to say, I don't know that even if they go back into session, if they would actually have cars on Millview or not. Because if they think they're going to, then I'd say, yes, we wait and do it when they're not in session.
I'm sure they would.
I'm sure they would.
It's an A.
A and B.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not having a kid there, I don't know, so.
Yeah.
Abby?
Well, the, we're getting the easement from the church, but will the sidewalk end up dead-ending there when the, is it the Mooseheart fence starts? Or will it continue all the way to, all the way around that?
So it's only going to go to the church's south property line?
Okay, and then?
South of that is a combination of both Mooseheart property and Park District property. And it would be anticipated that one day that would be constructed when the Mooseheart site develops.
Do we think that people will use that sidewalk and then try to cross over to go to the park? Is there any, could we do a mid-block crossing there, a mid-block? Blockway, crosswalk?
Frankly, I think probably the most use of that sidewalk is going to be all the kids who park on the west side of the road and who walk to the high school. That's probably the primary use.
Right, and to keep them from walking in the street. That's the big issue out there.
Literally, they're all walking in the street right now.
They're walking the street right now instead of walking down a sidewalk and getting in a car. So when school lets out or when school's starting, all the kids are out in the street.
We try to avoid mid-block crosswalks whenever we can. They're just not a really good practice.
And since the state won't let us put up any more flashing lights, you can do that.
We could right there.
We could there.
The city street.
Oh, it's the city street? So we could do that?
Yeah.
We have the two old standards. We could do that.
Technically could, and state roads, though. Didn't they approve them again?
No.
We just chose not to.
What's that?
The.
The flashing beacons? The flashing beacons?
Well, let's make sure we're all talking about the same thing, that the rapid-yellow flashing beacons such as exist at Batavia Avenue and Union are perfectly acceptable now. There was a period there where they weren't.
Right.
But now they are.
There was a patent issue that got cleared out.
Right.
The hawk system.
Still not allowed.
Was not allowed in the state of Illinois. You can travel to other states. You can travel to other districts within Illinois where they are permitted. They're not permitted here. On state roads.
Okay, but this is just an easement for the sidewalk construction.
This is just an easement that would allow us to construct a sidewalk essentially on private property behind the right of.
Anybody on the phone have any questions or comments?
I do. I, kind of along with Abby, I would like to kind of continue to monitor the kids with the potential of putting in a cross area. You know, maybe not something permanent, but maybe some down, sometime down the road if there is a concern for kids passing by.
Awesome.
Um, yeah, I mean, even trialing it for a short amount of time. Maybe not right away, but maybe when more kids come back.
Yeah, see, what I notice out there too is you get kids that want to cross on both sides of Millview. The east side, or the, yeah, the east side and the west side of Millview. The kids that want to go to their cars that are parked out there walk right down the street in the middle of it. The kids that are going home somewhere else are on the east side, and they go over to the Park District property and walk the path.
Yeah.
So.
But some of them might have friends, and even when the church has the breakfast on Thursday mornings, that's very popular. And kids are crossing all areas over. And granted, that's one day, but I think that that, just be cautious and, and maybe down the road.
Yeah, let's keep an eye on it.
Well, with large, I mean, they do large soccer games there too, so I would imagine people still park on the other side of the street.
Exactly. Yeah, they park in the church parking lot when their tournaments are going on for the Park District programs. So it's, you know, you're right, not even with the school, even with the Park District programs on the weekend, there is that.
I do not remember that being an option to park when I was in high school. I don't.
It wasn't. It wasn't. That's something that's come in recent years.
That street wasn't there when I was in high school. Okay? All right, no other comments. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 20-111-R, accepting ten-feet sidewalk easement from Covenant Church for the purpose of construction of a five-foot sidewalk along the east side of the church property.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Uer? Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried, eleven to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is a discussion, an update from the city administrator, and the mayor shows up, about the discussions with other taxing bodies from last week.
Yes, that is the reason why I was not able to attend the committee of the whole meeting last Tuesday was because the mayor and I attended the regularly scheduled board meetings for the library district as well as the Park District. And then there was a special meeting for the Batavia Township Board to, especially for consideration of TIF number six. And so I presented a PowerPoint presentation to each one of those taxing bodies. And it began with a basic explanation of what TIF is and how it can be used for economic development. I then presented some information about how the city of Batavia has used TIF in the past because some of those that are detractors with regard to TIF point to other jurisdictions, like the city of Chicago, where TIF has possibly been abused in the past. But I was able to demonstrate both with TIF number one that the predominant area there was where today you see the Waterford Townhomes and the Stone Quarry Pond condominiums, you know, which go for more than $500,000 per condominium over there. And what that was before was a very environmentally challenged industrial area prior to the city being able to. And TIF allowed the city to utilize funds to clean up that area in order to attract development, to provide an incentive to a developer to purchase land, which was previously industrial and very contaminated, and clean it up and turn it into a very nice residential community that it is today. And through the additional increment, the city was able to use those funds in order to make the streetscape improvements to attract further development to our downtown. What we did on Houston Street and Wilson Street and North River Street. The funds available to us through that was what allowed us to create that new city streetscape and the infrastructure underneath it that provide us with the development opportunities that we have coming our way today. I also pointed out that the TIF number one ends in 2025. And there was a chart in there that shows when TIF number one ends, what the incremental tax that is going to be going to the different jurisdictions at that time. For the, for the Park District, for instance, it was in excess of $60,000. For the Library District, it was in excess of $50,000 per year that they would be able to capture in additional tax revenue based upon an additional $12 million in EAV that has been created in TIF number one. I also looked at TIF number three because that is a TIF that is active right now and will be through 2038. But the establishment of TIF number three provided us with the opportunity to retain a national retailer anchor in our downtown, which is Walgreens. And so that, again, a successful use of TIF in order to accomplish the economic development goals of the city. Some properties which are currently part of TIF number one and TIF number three will become part of TIF number six, as you know. And I wanted to assure the taxing districts, just so they know, that the base EAV, when TIF number six is established, those properties that were previously in TIF number one and TIF number three will have their base EAV reestablished to the property value that exists in 2020. So they're brought up to today. Some of the detractors of TIF say, if you bring those TIF number one and TIF number three properties in, isn't it like keeping it low at the base EAV, the original EAV, for all that time? And it is not. So the base EAV actually does go up to the 2020 amount. And then we walked through the presentation that many of you have seen, that Chris Aiston has presented, about the basis for establishing TIF number six, that the criteria for a conservation area have been met. The statute requires three out of thirteen criteria be met, and our conservation area actually four criteria are met. And so I walked them through each one of those elements. They've seen not only that presentation, but also that underlying seventy-page document that is the Northeast District redevelopment plan and program, and offered them the opportunity to ask any questions that they might have. And each one of those groups had some excellent questions that they wanted to ask as to how the establishment of TIF number six would affect them and/or just questions about the redevelopment plan itself. And subsequent to those meetings, both the Library District and the Park District have reached out with follow-up questions. And either myself or Scott Buening, Peggy Colby, have responded to the questions that they have. It's my understanding that the Library District is meeting tonight for a final decision about what direction they'll provide to their executive director. And the dates from here on out are that the Joint Review Board is scheduled to meet on October 1st at 10:30 a.m. here in City Council chambers. We have a public hearing scheduled for November 2nd, which is the first City Council meeting of November. And we have the applications in community development for anyone who would like to register as an interested party. If you register as an interested party, then you receive all notices associated with TIF number six for a period of three years. But you can successively re-put your name on the list so that you continue to receive the, any information that is sent out about that TIF throughout its life. But that is basically how those, those sessions went. I'm now happy to take any questions that you might have about that.
Do you have any questions?
Hey Laura?
Yes.
How much, you told us what the increment value was for the Park District and the town. But what was it for the school board for TIF number one when it sunsetts?
Uh, that number is, let me just pull that up. Tell you what it is for, okay, so. For Batavia Schools, TIF number one expires in 2025, and the Batavia Schools will receive $729,901.68 every year thereafter from the EAV that has been created in TIF number one. So that's a big, big success story there. The, but the $12 million in EAV that has been created in TIF number one, that kind of pales in comparison to what we expect for the redevelopment in TIF number six. In TIF number six, if we are able to realize all of the redevelopments that we have planned to occur in that area, that will actually create four times as much EAV as we created in TIF number one. So the number there is $47,909,000. And even if only the one Washington Place project were to get built, that is, that project alone is creating $10 million of the almost $48 million in EAV. And so that would be, you know, of a comparable amount of tax that would be created by that one project alone in TIF number six. Another thing that, especially when I had the conversation with the Library District, because they were asking about what does the TIF Act provide for the Library District during the time of the TIF? You know, both the school district and the Library District are entitled to funding that must be set aside from increments that is created. And they're the only two taxing bodies that, that get that. Even the city doesn't get a set aside of a portion of the taxes. We are just, there's only certain purposes for which tax increments can be used under the TIF Act, whether it's a developer cost or whether it is a city cost. We can't use that as just, you know, simple revenue for us. I want to point that out. But the Batavia Library, there is a 2% set aside of the increment, and the Library District can receive $120 per eligible patron in any residential project that receives TIF assistance. And then also, you know, we've been talking about the fact that the school district receives an amount for each school-aged child that a, that comes from a residential project that receives TIF assistance in the TIF district up to either 25% or 40%. There's, you know, some, the school district is reviewing that with their legal counsel about what is the appropriate amount that they're entitled to and will, you know, accept what they, what their analysis is in that regard. So those two taxing bodies will, during the time that there is a TIF, still receive more than the other taxing bodies.
Laura?
Yes.
I have a question. Based on that, kind of like where we talked about, it's almost like a savings plan for a lot of these taxing bodies for 23 years down the road. The fact that they're able to get some of these increments during that time, does that mean that their payout at the end isn't going to be as much because they've been getting this money early?
Doesn't affect it.
Okay.
It doesn't affect it. It's over and above.
Okay.
It's basically that they don't have to wait the entire time to get the payout.
Right.
And that was changed, I think, 10 years ago or so. The legislature changed that.
Yes.
That there's a percentage that they get. And that was one of the things that we had discussed. You were not here. But we had discussed that, and that's one of the things in that plan or whatever that we had from the school district that suggested that we did not like going above and beyond what the state legislature said.
Yes. I, I listened to your discussion. And I have provided that response to the school district to say that it's just not something that we want to do at this time, both for comments that were mentioned, that being so close to the Joint Review Board meeting was a reason why the, the City Council did not want to look at that at this time. And then the other reason being that the feeling was that it, it reduces council's ability to provide the incentives that are the purpose of establishing the TIF and also to have the funding to do the infrastructure improvements necessary to complement and/or attract that development if we have already promised it to another party.
Right, because basically what that would do is just effectively shrink the amount of TIF available for us to have, to use for whatever purpose that we needed to, whether it was, you know, a developer incentive or infrastructure or anything else. It was reducing that, and then that hampered our ability to draw that project in or to get the project.
Exactly.
Then that doesn't benefit anybody.
Right.
So that was, I think, our, our main thrust. I'm glad that that got back to them and we'll just move forward from there. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Anybody on the phone? Okay. Thank you for the update. Next up will be our discussion on strategic plan update and SWOT analysis.
So this is just really an introductory discussion. It was back in 2018 when we went through this process for the first time. And we came up with a document that I have handed out. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of that in front of you. And it was really a from-scratch type of document. We just took a look, even to the very basics, of re-establishing a vision and a mission statement and what our fundamental values were. And these fundamental values are meant to guide our decision-making and our actions with regard to the goals that were established. So down at the bottom are the, the goals that were established, and we put those into these four categories. Each bullet point that you see there that is listed as a goal then was broken out into additional action items that the, went into this larger document that I have before me for which, on a quarterly basis, up until COVID hit after the first quarter of 2020, we were doing a real good job of, so we've missed one, one quarterly report. But I did want to start out today by saying, you know, we made some really nice progress on a lot of the goals that we had in here. And so if I could, I'd just like to highlight what some of those are. Under the, the first area of transportation, we did investigate the feasibility of a parking lot for train commuters. But it was based upon our discussions with PACE that were a little bit discouraging in that, that regard as to whether they had seen success with something like this in a community like ours that is located so close to a train station. And so in the fourth quarter of 2019, we determined that we weren't going to go any further with that particular goal. The next objective was to create a plan for a possible second bridge. And, you know, one of the things we were thinking was looking at different options for the location of that bridge. But I think that the opportunity for the second bridge is probably an item that we'll discuss a lot in terms of its priority for us in being on our next iteration of this plan, given the feedback that we received in the community survey. So we should take a, you know, a long, hard look at what type of community support there is for the bridge, in particular, in the short term. So if we're going to look at the next three years as a prioritization, we may rethink whether that stays on our plan or not. The next was identifying and enhancing safe-walking biking routes to and through downtown. We convened a great group of stakeholders who created a very nice document identifying certain areas where, in the short term, we could make improvements. And we worked that list and made several of those improvements. I think there were some items left on that list that had a higher dollar value and a greater complexity to them that maybe we should take a look at in our next iteration of this plan. And then also identifying and enhancing safe-walking routes. We were also looking at the possibility of creating a sidewalk connection between Geneva and Batavia and completing the sidewalk north of Campana to try to cooperate on that project. As we moved through that, Kane County decided that they were going to fund Phase One engineering for the reconstruction of the intersection of Route 31 and Fabian Parkway. And so we think that because a continuation of that sidewalk would require putting in walkway and, or I should say, crosswalk and the appropriate streetlight signage for the west leg of that intersection, that that's probably something that's going to happen in conjunction with the improvement of that intersection. So we think that while it looks more positive that that could actually happen in the future, we're going to be sort of on that schedule in terms of when we're going to be able to implement that. The next area was downtown development, creating a, the, the different actions where create a development plan for downtown, review and revise development incentives and policy, the process and service quality improvement, and increase the availability of public parking spaces downtown. With regard to the first two elements, we had looked at a plan for a, creating a overall economic development plan. And a key part of that was hiring this new position of economic development or business development manager position. And unfortunately, due to the economic situation presented by COVID, we've decided to delay that. But I expect that in our conversation about updating the strategic plan, that, that may really become a critical role for us in the future in order to be able to enhance our ability to become a winner in economic difficulties that face every community now. You know, so whereas certainly there are special aspects to what Batavia faces, COVID is across the board, something that's affecting everyone. And so we may need to revisit exactly what strategies become most important to us in light of this new context. But we have made several improvements to process and service quality. But we have made several improvements to process and service quality. We hired the additional person in community development to assist with code enforcement and doing inspections. We also improved our processes by creating the online permitting. And we also, right now, are in the process of reviewing and revising our building code and anticipate bringing some of that to you before the end of the year. With regard to the availability of the public parking spaces downtown, we do have this inventory created, and that is something that we probably could bring to you before the end of this year. And I think that's important because it's really in setting the stage for the conversation to see what the inventory is today between public parking and private parking and where it is located throughout our downtown and whether we really have insufficient parking or inefficient parking or a parking perception issue, to identify that. The next area on our strategic plan is the river. And the two action items were create a master plan for future development of our waterfront and establish and fund riverbank stabilization plan. On that first action item, within the last several months, we've had a lot of really great traction on that one, both in our communications with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, who has funding for and is moving forward with other communities in removal of their Little Town dams. And then just last Wednesday, we had the joint meetings of the city council and the park district, and both parties voted on and approved a intergovernmental agreement to collaborate with hiring Hitchcock Design to do a Fox River Master Plan in two phases. The first phase of which is to review the plan for the dam removal and a plan for preservation of the Depot Pond as a feature here in downtown. And then the other was establish a fund... Establish and fund riverbank stabilization plan. As time went on, we realized that this was really part of the larger next question under infrastructure of committing to a base level of funding for all infrastructure. And Gary had presented a plan back in the third quarter of 2019 that gave an analysis of what a base level of funding for our infrastructure would look like. And, but, you know, that is a base level of what it takes to maintain the infrastructure that we have today. I think one overall important thing as we move forward in creating the next iteration of the strategic plan is it is as important to visualize what things that we need to build and create in the future to accomplish that vision that we have. We also have to think about the funding to and know and be committed to. If we do a little bit every year, then when we actually implement that plan, then we have the funding necessary in order to pay for that. So that's just something that I think as our plans mature in each iteration, that that would be something that we want to include in there. Is there... Are there any questions about the existing plan or where things stand with regard to those goals?
Anybody?
No.
You know, I think we're progressing through some of this. I think this year's kind of been an anomaly where we just all kind of stopped for a while because there's so much else going on or not going on. And, you know, I think it's good for us to look at this again and realize there's still, you know, two more years of this, try to get through what we've already talked about. But it's also a time to think about, we're going to have to do this again and, you know, lay it out for another three years. So this may be a good time to take that pause and be able to try to figure out, okay, do we need to shift gears here or there and add other things to this to just to kind of progress forward with? I don't think we have to rewrite everything because we haven't gotten through everything.
Right.
But I think this is a good time to do this.
Yes.
I think with the feedback that we got from the community survey, it... I think the timing is perfect for us to be reviewing this and updating it and really taking the overall feedback that we got and, you know, really put a plan in place to try achieve what they're looking for. You know, obviously, we didn't get, like, the details, but, you know, that's up to us to kind of guide our community through that. And with that feedback, so.
And I think, of course, the biggest challenge is going to be funding the things that we think have to happen.
Yes.
And coming up with a plan for how to do that.
Right. But if you got to have a plan in place, and then you can look at the strategic part of the funding.
Alan, Marty?
Yeah, just absolutely everything you said. There's so many things that have changed. We now have more data about what people are talking about as a priority in conjunction with the amount of changes that we have seen. You know, I just go back to the discussions that we were having when we were investigating the... For the train parking lot. Well, that was at a time when ridership was growing. They were going to put in, you know, another deck. And we were seeing it. They're building buildings downtown. Everybody's going downtown. As faster than you can stop a metro train.
Right.
Everything has changed. Nobody's gone... I haven't gone downtown since March 13th with no end in sight. And there's thousands of people in my building that it's the same thing. Someone went down there the other day to that area. It is a ghost town in, you know, the North Loop. It's just... It's insane. And I was listening to some of that. So with those things in mind, they do align with a lot of the things that we... That do dovetail directly with the community survey. Economic downtown development, the talking about specific things that people want to see. Well, a lot of those things that people want to see, we've already started growing in cultivation. You know, you've got the boardwalk shops. Who knew that that was going to be kind of what an economic development person? We're taking those shops that start there and making sure that they move to a brick and mortar location so that the transition between incubator and full-on long-term is seamless within the city. That's what the residents want. That's what we know has to be done. So that is an easy goal to make sure that we put in.
Anybody else?
I wanted to say with the growth we've got going on with the boardwalk shops, that there's going to be more people coming downtown every... Every which way. I wanted us to keep in mind that as we're looking at identifying and enhancing safe ways of biking and walking in our downtown, also, we should... It should go hand-in-hand with exploring the options of riverbank stabilization to extending the river trails up and down the highway. Sorry. The river, connecting those together. Now, we talked about riverbank stabilization months ago, but some of that can go hand-in-hand because we're going to have to stabilize the river. And if we're going to do that, we might as well look at putting the walks in at the same time, but also using public-private partnerships when we start to develop those areas with whatever someone comes along. So we can keep in mind, thinking along those lines, that a lot of that stuff is tied together. We can do all of it at once instead of trying to piecemeal it together later.
Anybody on the phone have any comments?
This is Nick. I can jump in.
Go ahead, Nick.
I mean, I won't reiterate what everyone said. It's been great. But I do just want to say kudos to Laura for keeping this front and center. This is a time that it's easy to focus on the troubles and the problems and take your eye off the long-term goals and visions. So it's more important now than ever to keep our eye on those long-term goals. And I think it's great. It's a great first step, and let's keep at it.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question. Are we doing a full SWOT analysis tonight or...
No. No. Kind of tonight, I want to put together the plan for what we will do and the timeline, too, to try to plan that out.
So we'll revisit the SWOT analysis as a group or we're going to just... Okay, so we are...
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah. So what we did last time was I sent out a survey to each one of the aldermen, and they did kind of homework independently to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Thanks for the segue. It's perfect.
But I've done mine. That's why I was ready.
And those of you who did that process before will recall, what we did was we collected all that information, and then we put it into a survey for each one of you to look at what everybody had identified as all of the strengths and try to say which of those seem to be most important right now and least important right now. And so we'll do that. And then we'll also have a discussion when we come back with that SWOT analysis. Every one of those letters, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, can be related to one another in terms of identifying priority goals for our future because our strengths help us to capitalize on the opportunities that are out there. Our strengths help us to overcome the threats that are there. Our weaknesses might make it hard for us to take advantage of the opportunities out there, and our weaknesses and our threats are a real danger zone for us. So to be able to go into the identification of our future vision, because that's what we want to come to that strategic planning meeting with, is getting an idea of three years down the road, what does this town look like? And then what are the big things that are going to move the lever to make sure that we accomplish that? And then we come back and we kind of put in the details of it about, in order to accomplish this big goal, these are the various steps that we have to work in our plan that become then this big document here. But the SWOT analysis will be our first step. I gave you the summary of the results from the last time that we did that inventory and survey. So I think that we should repeat that process in advance of our next meeting. The way that the meetings happened back in 2018, we had two big meetings over at the Eastside Fire Station, and we had scheduled them for about three hours apiece. And I think both nights that we had those meetings, we used pretty much all of those two, three hours sessions. Is that something that you would prefer? Other groups utilize, like, an entire Friday or an entire Saturday or two days. Some people do it. But I really felt that we made the most use of our time when it was about the same time that we ordinarily meet in a day. I don't know. It kind of had that same type of cadence to it of our ordinary work session.
Yeah, and having been through a number of them in different venues, different ways that we've done this over the years, honestly, I think we got the most out of the last session that we did. The last two of them that we did. And maybe it was the way we set it up, the way we tried to really define it before we went into them.
Yep.
To really focus on having something come out of it that we could use and that we would actually hold ourselves accountable for implementing over time, that we were going to go back to it and review it a couple of times a year so that way we made sure we didn't forget that, hey, this is what we said we were going to do three years ago. What did we do? And that's something that I think was always lacking in earlier plans. So, you know, I feel like that was a good way that we went through that.
Okay.
So I'm all for trying to go back and do that again. You know, and I think that as long as nobody else is upset with that or against that, I think that's what we should do. Because I think it was the least amount of time that we had spent in all the iterations of these I've done. And then it seemed like it had the best product at the end of it of all of the ones that we had done.
I just kind of... I'm interested. I know you threw some questions to me in anticipation. So when you hold up the little paper, I'm kind of like, I was expecting binders. So I'm just kind of interested, having not gone through this and knowing what you know about things, is there any questions you wanted to kind of throw out for anybody to mull on going into anything?
No. And getting a little bit more time to mull over my own chicken scratch that I fine-tuned my thoughts will be great.
Right.
And then getting to kind of air those out a little bit as well in, you know, and getting to submit them for, you know, not anonymously, but like, to be able to throw them into the hat with everything else. No, it's really exciting. Good, I've got more time to...
Oh, yeah, you're totally going to geek out. I know you.
I'm such a nerd. Like, I love SWOT analysis.
Yes.
Very exciting.
I do, too. One of the suggestions that I would make, it is hard to predict the level of business that might need to be conducted on any given Tuesday. Let me just throw this out there. Would you be willing to, on the non-city council meeting Mondays? Could we have our two sessions on October 12th and October 26th?
Fine with me. I usually...
The other thing that I wanted to ask, I could try to figure out how to do the same type of working in teams that seemed to work well in the last iteration, but we were all in the same room. So would the folks who are on the phone feel safe being present in the room so long as social distancing was still maintained? Could we get everybody in person?
I think it's possible in this room.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would suggest you guys do it in this room.
Yeah.
Just the footprint of the fire station is smaller.
Yeah.
Right. And we're trying to not have any outside public in the fire station, too.
Yeah.
Just to try to limit their exposure.
I'd be okay if I think if we did it in here.
Okay. If... I'll tell you what, it's... I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so please email me if you would have any problems with doing it as an in-person session.
And if we... If there's somebody that couldn't do it in person, we could always use the screen.
Yes.
I think we should definitely at some point try that.
Yes.
And see how that would work if we had the screen up like we would do when we do an arm and call-in meeting.
Yes.
Especially if we only have four or five people that are out.
The good news is Howard is one cable away from being able to do go-to webinar and in-person meetings here.
Okay. Good. That's going to be my push, is to try to make sure that that could happen in the next month.
Great.
I think that's good.
Excellent. Excellent. All right, I will, um, put together agendas for those meetings very soon and, um, what the, what the homework we'll do in advance of those meetings. Very soon I'll send out the survey about the SWAT analysis so that we can compile that information and have it for our use, um, at our first meeting on October 12th.
Will that be at seven?
Yes, seven to 10.
And no lighter than 10.
Yeah.
I'll turn the lights off at the clock.
We were, our minds were due by 10 o'clock.
If we're going to have extra meetings in a month, I'll make sure that they end. I say that and I probably have the longest meetings ever in city council that I've run. Have to be careful.
Uh, the other thing that I'd like to end with is just if you could be thinking about in the back of your mind, we have the four different categories that we use this time to, um, organize our goals. I'm not sure those are the right categories, you know? So as we go through this, we may decide that different buckets make sense. Like, I'd maybe suggest one for financial sustainability because that just, I think is going to be a common theme for municipal government for the foreseeable future.
I think economic development.
Yes, economic development is another one, for sure. And I've been doing a lot of looking at what other cities', um, uh, strategic plans look like and the way that they're organized. You know, one of the things that I love about our plan versus some other plans that I see out there, these are not platitudes, these are things that people can get done. So I really love that about our plan and it's extremely helpful to staff for it not to be platitudes either. We have some real things that we can get done. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. And now, another update from last night on project status?
Yeah, I don't have a lot new, um, from yesterday, so, um, you know, maybe just to reiterate for everyone that the candidate guide is now available for the April 6th, um, election. We have a seat available in each ward, um, and we also have a two-year unexpired term in the first ward. Um, we are working right now on determining what our winter outdoor dining policies will be. The City of Chicago just re, uh, yesterday came out with what their guidelines are. Um, we have to also consider if the state of Illinois will come out with any additional guidelines with regard to, uh, requirements for whether people can eat indoors in structures and if they are allowed to eat indoors in structures, then can those, uh, be heated and how might they be heated? So we will have more information available to folks about that in the future. But, um, the public outdoor dining areas, that furniture will be removed on, uh, the week of November 9th. Because, uh, in the event that there is a snowfall, we need to be able to get the equipment through there to, um, clear that snow. Just a little bit of update on our, uh, public works projects that we have going on. And there are so many of them going on right now. The 2020, uh, resurfacing project has commenced and that should be completed by early October. The Area 3 sewer separation project is on schedule to be completed the end of the construction season. Prairie Street is on schedule to be completed by mid-October, which is a little bit earlier than its schedule. The work that's being done along, uh, South Batavia Avenue is anticipated to be completed by the end of this construction season, but the work that's going on along Main Street will be partially completed. We'll do it on a block-by-block basis and, uh, but we do expect that there's still going to be some residual work that we need to complete in 2021.
Laura?
Yes.
While you're on Main Street, I know we talked before the meeting, but I just wanted to get it out to the public watching tonight, that, um, we've had some complaints about the dust, um, because it's been so dry, um, and because there's been so many trucks trying to get work done out there. There's been just incredible amounts of dust all along the, you know, the first four or five blocks of that. Um, so we got notice today that the contractor will be going twice a day, you said, to, to water the street down?
Yes.
To try to keep the dust down.
Yes.
So it's not going to eliminate it, but it could help.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that that went public tonight, that people know that we are listening and we're going to get the contractor to do something.
And then finally, just, um, I mentioned last night, kind of a public service announcement, just letting everybody know there's been an uptick in the burglaries to motor vehicles. And that's throughout the Fox Valley region as well as here in Batavia. Just encourage citizens to remove valuables from your vehicles when they're unattended and always lock your doors, especially at night. That's it.
So, any questions, Marty?
Uh, as it relates to the guidelines for the outdoor dining and that, I understand there's going to be a lot of changing even as we continue to go, as it possibly spikes again and all of those conditions are going to be changing for a while. However, all communities and all restaurants are going to be in the same kind of boat.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm concerned that if we don't proactively figure out some things that we might allow or change policies on certain, uh, types of heaters or, uh, fire pits, that, those sort of things, that when restaurants go to go buy them, they're not going to be available or they're going to be so astronomical that the economic is not going to make sense. So how can we proactively, understanding that the guidelines still maybe aren't there, but what, what barriers or policies do we need to review, look at as, as a council for, to give direction that yes, we will allow that, no, we will not allow that? So that businesses can start proactively making their plans for what they need to do?
I would say that if you are going to use any type of heating, that, um, probably you should not anticipate that you would be allowed to do that within a structure. I mean, of course, no propane, uh, type of heater inside a structure. Um, electric, the City of Chicago is allowing electric heat inside structures. If a certified electrician is used to install whatever that is, and then you also have to have a fire extinguisher. And it, the feedback from the business community on the Chicago rules is that it's cost prohibitive for, for most businesses. So what I would advise is if you have an outdoor area that is uncovered, heaters are fine. But, um, as soon as you have the introduction of the, some type of tent structure, then no. Um, the current rules with regard to any enclosure are that 50% of one wall has to be open for air circulation and that any tables need to be located within eight feet of that opening. So for instance, that became important for Riverside Pizza as where they can open their front doors. Um, but the, the tables need to be within eight feet of the front of the restaurant before indoor seating was allowed. Now indoor seating is allowed, so.
And I know we, we've got like the fire pit that was the unsanctioned one outside of the former Aliano's. However, people are wondering what does that mean for temporary, um, temporary pits or structures? Um, I don't know what we have that does or doesn't allow that. And I think I'm kind of wondering what the direction would be for that. Because I know that we can have stuff that's in your backyard, not smoke generating, but what can a business in a non-enclosed area, non-tented area, what can they use that if they can't get a propane heater or an electric heater, can some of the burn pits be allowed? I, I don't know.
I'll explore that because it, in my memory, when, uh, Pell Joey's was over here on the river, that there were some type of, uh...
They had, they actually had open flame in the centers of the tables. I mean, and I've seen that in other cities and other places.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. We are actually meeting about this tomorrow, so.
Yeah, because I think it'll just be helpful for when we get questioned, is this allowed? Is that not allowed? So that when, if they want to go out and burnt, buy a, a burn pit or a fire pit before they're all gone, that, yeah, you can go ahead and do that with the anticipation that there might be some cleanup ordinances or direction. And I think people will understand.
Or even liability.
Yeah, I think that question was actually asked at one of the governor's, um, press conferences. And I think it's the state fire marshal or something was going to come back with a recommendation is, uh, my memory on, on what the governor's response or somebody's response was at one of those press conferences. Because that's something that's being asked all over the state.
Right.
About what they can do.
Right.
You know, because it's, okay, if I go out and, you know, have a tent put up, can I have, you know, the heaters on it if I leave one wall off of it? Or can I use infrared heaters on it or whatever they want to do? And I think the one big question was, especially when it's in a public right-of-way, like on a street or a parking lot or something like that, that I don't know how you allow an open pit fire, you know, or a, a fire pit that's there with, you know, even a wood fire. How, how do you allow that? Because if you're going to try and get any heat off of it, it has to be partially covered, which it doesn't, it doesn't work. Get any heat off of it. So I think that there's probably, I hope that there will be some kind of direction from the state, but who knows what that'll be.
So, so if we had an enclosed, we had a tent on River Street.
Mm-hmm.
One of the businesses puts a tent up there for, for, and they wanted to heat it with propane. Propane's a clean energy. And so they, they then vented through the, the top of the tent somehow, like a teepee, you know, but they vented. We wouldn't allow something like that? And they had it, you know, some, somehow, you know, cordoned off so people couldn't go up against it or to it?
I am going to defer to our, uh, fire department.
Right.
To, to see what, um, recommendations they have. The City of Chicago's, um, guidelines say no indoor propane.
We have an existing situation, uh, right across the street here at the former Aliano's. The signs are all gone and everything else. I don't know if you remember, he went out there and put a fire pit out.
Right.
Under the...
First he put it underneath the o, overhang. Then we howled and screamed and he, without permits, he moved it, put it out where it is now. And the new owners have asked, I think, the fire department as to what, what they should do with this. Should they plan on trying to use it or not? I will tell you, I've been in there, they're doing a wondrous job in there. That place was a filthy hole. It should have been condemned by the county health department a long time ago and they have to cut it down to its rafters as far as what they're done in there.
Wow.
Because that thing was left in really, really rough shape. So they're going to be a nice user over there, I have a feeling. But, uh, there, there's, that's one of the questions I think the fire department's going to discuss with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Is what, what they can do over there with that one. And, you know, there's been some, there's been some really bad stories here in the region as recent as last Saturday out in Elburn where they had a fire going outside the house and they ended up burning the house down. So there's, there's some real horror stories. And we, Batavia was very much involved in the fire in Elburn the other day. So we were out there for three, four hours helping them out there and it was quite a story.
Well, I ju, I just, I just bring it up because we have to try to be somewhat creative for the businesses because come wintertime, it's really going to be difficult. And I just know in, in, in the construction arena, you know, we have propane-run equipment that's indoors. It has to be, we have to have monitors, but it's, it's permissible, it's permissible all throughout Chicagoland. And so I thought if we had some sort of a, this is running big equipment inside enclosed spaces.
Right.
Uh, so I just thought if, if we can somehow be creative for the businesses somehow, not, not, not bend the rule or turn a blind eye at all because we don't want to, we want to keep people safe.
Right, safety first.
But be creative, you know, safety first, of course.
Mike, you're absolutely right. And they make the, they make the, the heaters that are, have the vented, uh, the air duct ones too, that can pump in the heat.
Right.
Uh, so then the heat structure would be on the outside.
Right.
And you're pumping in the heat. And I, I think those are the things that, that we ought to make sure that are allowable because that makes total sense.
Right, we try to expose them. I just think, uh, businesses are going to, are going to suffer and, and I...
It is. I'm not, you know, I, I will definitely be working closely with, um, Beth Walker and with Margaret Perro to determine what number of businesses want to serve people outdoors as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, it's a matter of their personnel have to be running from inside to outside. And, you know, it's, how to dress in order to be able to do that is difficult.
Right, and it's, it's not like you can connect the, the business directly to a tent or directly to it.
Right.
I mean, I even thought and talked to somebody last week about, you know, could we take the bottom level of parking deck and turn that into a, you know, an open air, leave the walls of it open, but be able to heat that and flow air through it? I don't know if that's even feasible. Plus then, you're that much further away from every business that's there that's trying to use it.
Put everyone on skates.
So, yeah, it, it, you know, it's, there's a lot of challenges to try to figure out how to make something work there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, you know...
So we'll be reaching out to the, the businesses to see what their vision is.
Right.
Or what they're capable of doing.
What they think they're capable of doing.
Yes, yes.
You know, and, and that's a real reality, you know? If you take a place that's got a, a big deck or something that's right off the front of the side of the building or ability to put a tent in the parking lot immediately from one of their exits to their building, that would be something totally different because then it would be easy to service that from the existing business. But when you're walking out in the street and going half a block away to get there, that's going to be difficult to do that. Mike?
Have we had many inquiries for businesses to have the tents with the walls?
Uh, no.
We haven't?
No.
That surprises me because I know I've talked to some, and maybe Batavia Main Street could chime in, Batavia Chamber. As I'm going through Geneva, downtown Geneva's got tents, walls all the way down the street.
I hear there's igloos up there and, and all sorts of things, but we just are not receiving those same inquiries.
Okay. Be interesting because I'd like to see something like that for us too. Because one of the main concerns about these restaurants is to prolong the outdoor seating.
Right, as long as possible.
We're not going to phase five. And one way to do that is the tents with the walls. And if they could do that for an extra 30 days, I think it'll be so beneficial to all the businesses down there.
Nick, you're up next.
Uh, thanks, Alan. And I, I want to say I, I like your creative, uh, thinking along with the, the garage and, uh, Michael, you said it right, creativity is part of it. But back to what Marty, Marty said, is the proactive, uh, approach. Laura, you, you said you'd reach out to, to Margaret and, and if we're hearing any businesses, but that's the key thing. What, what I want to make sure is that we have answers for the businesses as soon as possible to say, not to say, no, you can't do that, but to say, you know, if we say no, say, here's what you can, you have answers and direction instead of just saying, no, uh, you can't do it. So obviously we have a, a lot of, uh, you know, the, the city will wait for, the City of Chicago has got, uh, a lot of variables, but let's, uh, keep it proactive and keep ahead of it as much as possible.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody else with any others?
Yes.
Keenan?
I, sorry, I had a, um, resident ask me if we know what, as a city, what we're going to be doing with Halloween. I know we probably don't have any answers yet, but I don't know if we've been thinking about it. People are, are curious as to what we're going to allow, if we're even going to get involved in it.
So, with what?
The most that the city has been involved with trick-or-treating in the past is that the, uh, police department would put out what are the hours that trick-or-treating will happen? Other than that, it is, you know, up...
We're trying to stay hands off.
We stay hands off. We are staying even more hands off this year, especially in light of the fact that, uh, just today, the CDC came out with guidelines which categorized door-to-door trick-or-treating as a high-risk behavior with regard to COVID. door-to-door trick-or-treating as a high-risk behavior with regard to COVID. And so, and we posted that on social media, and the response was primarily negative.
Yeah, so we're going to let people make up their own.
People can make up their own decision, but realize that the Center for Disease Control during a worldwide pandemic is saying that it's a high-risk behavior. But if one were to choose to send their kids out despite that recommendation, that's up to them.
And also, you know.
It's a peaceful protest.
It's a light. If the light is on, you can go there.
Right.
But don't, if there's no light on, don't, there are just families that don't want to participate in that. So I think it needs to be, you know.
I will let them know. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have any others?
Other, others?
Not?
I move we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Bye.
Right, bye.
Opposed? Okay, everybody gets to go home.